Thanks. Welcome, everybody, to the Town and McCandless Meeting of Town Council for October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. I'd like to call to order the meeting, and please everyone stand and. With us for the.
By the religion steward of the United States of America. Into the Republic, religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Briefly, for those that have been to the meetings before, they know how. The tone we set, for those that have not been here, this is how we run our meetings. We will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect. Because in the end, we are all neighbors. A few announcements and other items here. The public hearing for eighty-eight oh seven People's Road rezoning request was canceled due to withdrawal of the application. And next up, we have some junior council members. Well, yeah, two junior, two junior council members to spare tonight. First, did you want to tell everybody about yourself real quick?
Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Chen, and I'm going to be a junior at North Allegheny High School. And I would say a little about myself is my actions are always sustainability and environmental. In the future, I hope to send you some of my engineering by energy and.
A little bit about yourself. I'm a person from around the two year. My actions on the rowing scene, I got some rumors back there. Um, I would have studied law in the future and, you know.
Very good. Well, you can have one of the time. Those damageers spoke to the microphone and picked us up. Do you care which side you keep? You stand on for the photos or anything? This is side five. Okay. So if you could raise your right hand. So I state your name.
I, Yuki Chen.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common.
And the Constitution of this.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Mm-hmm. So I hope that's like you look back in time when you take this office, when you take this over higher office, and you know, at least on a picture. So, okay. All right, say something. Raise your hand. This is good side. Yes, okay. You're very good. I state your name.
I, Carson Corona.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common.
And the Constitution of this common.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And then I would discharge the duties of this office with fidelity.
Very good. Congratulations. Likewise, I hope, you know, I'm gonna picture twenty-five years now. Much greater than I have. I hope.
I don't think.
Ninety-seven.
So, yeah, it's exactly.
Good evening, McCandless Township. Thank you for having me tonight. I've already done this, but I'd like to stop my speech for telling you a little bit about myself. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Yuki Chen, and I'm a junior at North Allegheny High School. I was born in Japan and was a Pittsburgh young age. I'm living around the city, and I'm a resident of McCandless, where we have been for the past. I share with you my short life story, hopefully not to bore you, but to paint you a picture of where I come from. As a child, I always knew that I wanted to do something with my life and create change in our world, but I wasn't always sure how to be able to. Little did I know that the opportunity to give back to my community when one day comes to fruition into the role of junior councilperson. Today, I stand before you, each be honored and humbled by the chance we have placed. I previously said that I would like to change the world. As childish as it is, it's truly a different life form. Be able to create an impact for the people of our earth. I should have appointed the junior councilperson as a first step in a larger journey, a journey that has the potential to transform lives and communities. Currently, the county township is my world. As junior councilperson, I am here to listen to your concerns, your hopes, and your ideas. I will swear to commit my all to bettering this community and improving the quality of life for all of our residents. Further, this role is an opportunity to bridge generational gaps and engage our. We must encourage them to take an active role in shaping the destiny of our community, because I believe our energy, creativity, and fresh perspectives are invaluable assets when pursuing positive change. I once again express my gratitude. This is a moment of great significance for me, often as an individual, as a representative of our community. I promise dedicating myself to the service of this community with honor and integrity and a deep sense of responsibility. Together, we can write this next chapter of our life, of our community success story, and I am truly excited to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
You, Carson, you have a few words?
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I am honored to serve as the junior council per councilman for McCandless Township for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school year. I am grateful that the council has the confidence in me to carry out this job at a vital time for our community and school district. The need for various perspectives in running a community is essential. I look forward to delivering a different perspective and bridging the gap between council and students. It is a great pleasure to serve as a voice for McCandless on behalf of North Allegheny. I'm excited to learn about the inner workings of local government and how we can work together to improve our community. I look forward to meeting with individuals, listening to their concerns, ideas, and perspectives, and then conveying, and then communicating with the council. I want to work with a cross-section of peers to ensure all perspectives are heard. Along with peers, I look forward to collaborating with district leaders, shows as our superintendent and board of directors, to keep them informed about our community. I take this role at a vital time for our community. Students shouldn't be daunted by the challenges we face. As strong as the storm may be, I know McCandless is stronger. Our town was built by people who get things done. We have vast reserves of talent, energy, and determination. You have trusted me to work with these people and to advise the town, and I will not disappoint. I am confident that together we can better our town and work towards our future. However, in order to do so, it is critical that we continue to uphold the core values on which our town was built. As stated before every town council meeting, we will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect, because in the end, we are all neighbors. By following our McCandless values, we can work together and deliver for our neighbors. Thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility at a vital time for our community and district. I look forward to working with you all. I am determined to deliver. Thank you.
Great speeches. Thank you. Oh, as a reminder, November seventh is election day, and some up here on the day I serve for real, and I know there's some here. Uh, yeah, in the audience that are, uh, that are running for a seat too. So good luck to all of you. Make sure everyone gets out and votes. Um, a few other announcements, uh, the famous mute. Famous musical Pittsburgh will be held at the Heritage and Cultural Center on November sixteenth. And the Heritage Center is also having the Shining Star Gala. Uh, November twenty-fifth at the chat with tickets are still available online. For more details on both of those, please go to our website.
Oh.
Any announcements from?
I just wanna say, I think, believe it's the famous musicians of Pittsburgh.
My apologies.
That's okay. Um, and if I could add one more announcement, please. I just want to remind everyone that the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Uh, you may have seen that our subscription date officially ended September thirtieth. But I want to remind everybody, you can still go online to pay your subscription at ninety dollars a household. It really has a big impact in the services that we provide our community through our ambulance authority. So just go to mfpaa.org to make that payment. Thank you.
Any other announcements from anyone up here? Being known, we'll move on. Up next, the public hearing, uh, Mr. Porble, will you?
Yes, glad. Thank you, President Thorpe. Um, at this point, um, we will call to order, uh, the public hearing on tentatively identified ordinance fifteen forty-two. Which would have been the town code of ordinances, part thirteen. Uh, to revise section thirteen oh three point two thirty and table thirteen oh three J. Temporary uses to add and amend regulations for certain temporary uses within the town. Um, at this point, I don't know, uh, RJ, if you would like to, uh, give us a. Cliff notes version of what we're talking about, and then we can open up to folks, uh, that may want to testify here at the hearing in for or against the ordinance.
Yeah, no, no slides tonight. We'll keep it brief because there really hasn't been any change since the last time we originally presented. Um, to counsel, you know, the suggested amendment, but for anyone who is coming into this newly, um, this is one of. Probably a handful of cleanup amendments that we will be doing to the new zoning and development code. Um, basically, as we use the ordinance, there are things that we see that we go, oh, that didn't quite work the way that we thought it would, or, you know, maybe for, uh. Readability or user friendliness, there are some improvements that that can be made that we identify, and this was one of them. Um, so. There are a couple more temporary uses that we've gone into more detail on, um, to protect the town a little bit better as in. Construction staging, for example, making sure that construction staging stays on the lot that construction is actually occurring upon. Um, clarifying some of the special event permits. Uh, and the procedure for that and establishing some sort of basic ground rules that the zoning hearing board can use to hear special exceptions, which would be any types of temporary use. Um, that are not specifically identified already in in this temporary use section. Um, the planning commission had a couple comments, you know, we had a really good discussion overall, they said that, that, you know, they felt that this was a good improvement. Um, to the existing ordinance, and we reviewed those. With the town attorney's office and ultimately determined that there were no material changes necessary to the draft that you all sent down. Uh, so they have divided their unanimous recommendation to adopt the ordinance at the second meeting next month. Um, which is when it will be up for a vote. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. That's all that I have.
Any questions from Kansas? Being none. Thank you. Okay, so go. Uh, we will ask for comments, uh, from anybody that wants to speak in favor of the ordinance. Please come forward. Seeing none, are there any, uh, residents here that would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance or have comments on the ordinance? This is right.
It's Ellen Wright, nine six twenty-five. Blue Tumor Road. How is the PA? Twenty-five one oh one. I'm speaking against the ordinance. And I'm speaking against it because of lack of notification. Um, when will the minutes for the ninth, September fifth, twenty twenty-three planning commission be posted? On ten twenty-three, no minutes are posted for nine twenty-three. It's a little hard to read, but this is a cut and paste from the, uh. McCandless. Uh, planning commission page, and it's showing that there are no minutes posted from September fifth. And obviously, there was a meeting, um, on October third. And on the agenda, there was to approve the minutes, so it's unclear as to why those minutes aren't posted. And so if we're having a public hearing, um, how can people make an informed decision if they can't see the plan and commission comments? Um, so then. The, uh, on the agenda item for ten three was also the temporary use of zoning. And obviously, those minutes haven't been approved yet and won't be approved until November. And so, once again, how can we publicly make an informed comments for tonight's public hearing? Um, when there's no minutes from ten three or September twenty-five. So that's my concern, that we've heard that the council unanimously approved it, but we have no minutes that say, I mean, planning commission. Unanimously approved it, but we have no minutes that say that. Thank you.
That's right. Any other comments on the ordinance? Seeing none, that will, uh, end the public here. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, next up is our public comment from the public, uh, uh, for those that are new. Uh, you come up, you get five minutes to state your name and address. Uh, it's a comment on the agenda item and not really a question and answer. If you do have questions, we can certainly. Brian and I stay later, anybody up here, we can, we can, we can go into delve into things in more detail. So if there's anybody here that has any pop of comments on anything on the agenda. Uh, come on up and five minutes will be yours. Okay.
Can we, can we see to it that the other committees? Get the information to us so we can post this stuff in a more timely fashion? Because this keeps coming up over and over and over again. That's not just this one area. So I think we need to, to look at that, because he brought this up for. Okay, thank you.
All the comments from anyone, anyone else? Okay. Moving on. Next up, the, uh, town council minutes from the October ninth meeting, we're in everyone's packet. Uh, do we have anybody that wants to make any, uh, revisions to this?
Oh, yes. And Casey, what you have?
Okay. Um. After Eagle Scout, there is the section motion to appoint. I actually. Made a motion to appoint the EAC members. And they have in this document both our new council members instead, so it needs to be amended to put in the name Archie Camrith. Instead of Yuki and Carson. It's on page six. Okay. That's it.
Are there any other? Revisions?
I'll make a motion to approve the town council meeting benefit on October ninth as amended this evening.
Second.
Second is quoted. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next up, reports of the committees. Mr. Casey, can you take us through the administration?
I'd be delighted to. Let's start off by asking. This is great house to come up. Yeah. What? Does anybody have any questions relative to the checklist in number nine dated September first? Through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Good evening, council. Um, you will notice that tonight's checklist is larger than most. Um, that is a timing issue, not an issue challenge. We had three payrolls in September, which drove that expenditure up. It's just the way the calendar falls. We also have started to pay for the paving program as well as the Walpark, um, improvements. So those multiple items, as well as, um, some rules and refunds have driven that number higher than normal. Not anything. Of concern or note beyond that. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on page five, um, this is just a question. I don't know what this is, an evidence library. And the sum of over eight thousand dollars or. At the top. To Motorola Solutions.
That is a, a digital, um, police. Um, tool that they use, uh. So.
Is it a standard? Yeah, I mean, I, I want to give our police everything they need to do their jobs, but I'm just curious what this was.
Expected and, um, it's a yearly fee.
Okay, to yearly, okay.
I, I believe.
If it's not, it will be. Okay. Thank you.
Then answer your question then.
Yes, thank you. And I have one other question.
Absolutely.
You, um, I know you can do this right now on the spot, but if we could get a summary of community day expenses and, and like kind of a summary of what. What all went into that, so we can have that ready for next year would be great as.
Yes.
All in one spot.
We have provided that to the committee, and we did fall within budget this year, actually quite a bit below. Um, so we are confident that we have most, if not all of the expenditures in at this time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make the motion to approve checklist in number nine dated September first, twenty twenty-three. To September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three totaling two million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents. As submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second.
Okay. And Mary Ann, uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, next up, it's the. Dashboard report.
So this is the September dashboard report. Um, again, we are in line with revenues, um, from prior year. As well as expenditures, the one change or difference that I will tell you is that we are, as mentioned previously. Progressively funding CIP or Capital Improvement Program with that transfer from general fund. So the roughly million dollar difference between this year's expenditures and last year is what we have contributed to capital projects to fund ongoing problems, programs. And I can show you that here. This is the expenditures page. And you can see where we have a million one here. There is no contribution in prior year, and that's roughly the difference between the two years. Does anyone have any questions regarding the dashboard?
Thank you, Mr. Great House. Next, the communications report. We're gonna push. Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. Thought that would be. Uh, communication report was in your package. If you have any questions. Let me know. Okay. Next is the budget workshop revenues departments and. I'll let you. I bet you're trying to skip the budget workshop. Oh, no, we'll take my work.
Uh, good evening, once again, council. Um, tonight begins the. Month and a half long process of adopting the twenty twenty-four budget. Consistent with prior years, we have two budget workshops scheduled. Tonight would be considered budget workshop light. Um, next Monday's meeting will be considered budget workshop heavy, um, just because it includes the capital project improvement fund. As well as the parks and rec and some of that fund balance discussion that I know you all are looking forward to. So we, um, tonight, we're going to cover the general fund. We're going to talk about revenues. We're going to talk through the general government departments, um, from town council all the way through building and plant. We're going to touch on RJ's departments that are in public safety, which include code enforcement. And planning and zoning, since she is here for tonight's meeting and can answer any questions you might have. We are also going to talk through parks and recreation, um, that'll include culture, uh, which is the Heritage and Cultural Center. As well as the parks, the library, which you have already approved. And the community celebrations, which is community day's budget. We'll talk briefly on refunds and transfers. And then I will cover briefly the special revenue funds because they provide the revenue towards the capital improvement program budget. Which, again, we will talk about at the next council meeting. Um. Once we final, once we finish the budget workshops, we will move to the public hearing, which is the last meeting in November. And then we are scheduled to adopt the twenty twenty-four budget, the first meeting in December, which is the second Monday. And I'll go over that timeline again in a little bit. This is the twenty twenty-four proposed consolidated budget. It sits at twenty-eight million dollars. There is a nineteen million dollar general fund budget. And then the, um, other major and minor funds that the town is required to, uh, adopt budgets for, uh, per the charter. You can see what the makeup of that twenty-eight million is. Sixty-eight percent of it is the general fund, which is the general operating fund of the town. This is where payroll comes out of. This is where all of our day-to-day supplies and operating expenses occur. This is where some of our smaller capital purchases occur. Additionally, twenty-five percent of this year's budget is the capital projects and improvements fund. It's roughly seven million dollars. It is an ambitious program once again this year. The American Rescue Plan, this will be the final year, hopefully, for this budget adoption, um, under the United States Treasury Act. We must appropriate this money by twenty twenty-four and spend it by twenty twenty-six. I hope to transfer it to general funds in its entirety, uh, remaining, what's remaining in twenty twenty-four. Um, then we receive state aid from Liquid Fuels to assist us in the. Road program under capital improvement projects. And then you have some of your smaller funds that are standard from year to year. It is a two, a two percent increase if you take it from the amended budget. If you take it from the originally adopted budget for twenty twenty-three, it's about a four and a half percent increase over prior year. What makes up the seventeen point eight million dollar? Revenues that we project for twenty twenty-four. Once again, earned income tax makes up thirty-nine percent of that. I have budgeted it to reflect an increase of about eight percent over twenty twenty-three's amended budget. That's kind of a catch-up. We've had stronger than anticipated budget, I'm sorry, stronger than anticipated revenues in that line item coming out of COVID. And so I'm finally confident enough to make that assumption in twenty twenty-four. Um, it remains the major revenue of the, of the general fund. Followed by the real estate tax. There is no planned increase. In the real estate tax mileage, it will remain the same. I have that wrong. It's the nineteenth consecutive year. I jumped ahead one year this year. I will correct that slide. The real estate transfer tax previously was in the top three with the change in interest rates. As we've discussed every month this year, that revenue item has now dropped to number four. The business privilege tax remains strong, um, and rounds out with local, um. Services tax, the taxes for the town. So, again, this is what that. Where the money comes from for the general fund. Um, if anyone asks. These are the taxes that make up that, as well as state funding, local funding. Charges and fees for service, license and permits. And then that ARPA transfer we talked about. Something I do want to mention is that nineteen million dollars in revenue. Five percent of that is the ARPA transfer. So to keep in mind, that will not be there in twenty twenty-five. Do, does anyone have any questions about revenues?
Right, should we do something about? It's what, eight hundred plus thousand?
Yes.
That's not going to be here in twenty-five.
We have made some consideration for that in some of the expenditures for twenty twenty-four, and I'll talk briefly. About that tonight, more in depth in twenty and. On the next workshop, because we did a lot, we did about a million dollars. In capital equipment purchases between the police department and the public works departments and capital improvements. So, things like an excavator. Three police cars, um, another parks vehicle, not a park truck. It's for one of the other departments within, um. Public Works. We're also buying a couple trailers. Another detention pond mower. Um, things that we've either been putting off. Or that we want to purchase in anticipation of meeting, not only this year, but in the future.
You're saying it'll reduce.
That'll reduce. Those are one-time expenditures.
Couple of years to come.
Yes, so those one-time expenditures will not recur in twenty twenty-five and hopefully alleviate. And concern there. So, once again, where the money goes. Consistent with prior years, public safety, which is made up of police, fire, ambulance. Um, code enforcement makes up about forty percent, forty-six percent of the general fund budget. Public Works makes up about twenty-three percent. Uh, if you remember the dashboard, those are the final two boxes on that dashboard to show you where we are currently as a total spend. That'll be my benchmark going into twenty-four. General Government shows at twelve percent. Um, transfers to other funds. This year. There is a thirteen percent of the general fund budget is a transfer to CIP at two point five million dollars. Again, as part of our fund balance policy that's been adopted longstanding here in the town. Revenues that over, that exceed expenditures two years prior are used for future investment into capital projects. In order to do that, so this is a reflection of what we anticipate twenty twenty-two's or what twenty twenty-two's results were. And then able us to have a seven million dollar CIP program, and a lot of that's due to ARPA. We're going to run into general government. General government is made up of town administration, financial administration, tax collection, building and plant, and citizen information and town council. Town council's budget is coming in at a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. That is made up primarily of other services and charges. Personnel services, there is no increase for council salaries in twenty twenty-four. Will remain at. Will remain at two hundred dollars a month. The um expenses include things like the strategic planning process. We hope to engage that in February and March to have it back in time to help with the twenty twenty five budget process. Also includes things like the town attorney retainer and fees for council as well as some of the other memberships and professional organizations that council um participates in. Also as an addition this year, because we anticipate three to four new council members, we have money um programmed for the local government academy, which is kind of like a council member boot camp. Can see how that breaks out.
The public address system isn't in here. It's in four oh nine.
It's in four nine, correct. Don't let me forget to tell you about that. So the, um, four oh one town administration is the town manager's department. The town manager off acts as the chief executive officer of the town. His budget is here. He in, his budget includes two and two and a half individuals roughly, um, as well as legal fees and IT consulting services and hardware maintenance for the town administration departments. Um, you can see how that breaks out here. Coming up very well there. Um, it's, um, there is, it looks like there's a large reduction here. There was because of the planning and zoning ordinance update, there was a higher than expected um, ordinance codification cost that we and we took on in twenty twenty three. So it makes it look like we really cut the town manager's budget and we didn't. So. The four oh two is financial administration. This is my budget. It also serves for accounts payable, accounts receivable, investments, personnel. Um, this year we are proposing to swap half of an employee with tax collection. And we are proposing to engage a payroll service consistent with other communities in our area. Um, hopefully this will alleviate some of the um continuity in employees and help us to find a better fit for that position. Um, in addition, it includes the cost of the financial audit. Um, something to note, there is a large fluctuation in the expenses from twenty twenty. We moved the insurance costs from financial administration to four oh nine building and plant. Um, so that's a little over two hundred thousand dollars um, in that difference. You'll see that when we get to four oh nine. As I mentioned in tax collection, we are proposing to move the part time tax assistant to a full time tax assistant. This will facilitate um, some of the duties in that office. And this also includes part of the receptionist position. The town is working, a lot of this is taken on by the school district. You'll see here that some of the personnel costs in this are offset by charges to NASD to collect their taxes as well as ours, as well as some tax certification fees when we provide those to mortgage companies when my property is purchased in the town. I ran through some of those really quickly. Does anyone have any questions on town council through tax collection? Four oh six is citizen information. There's really not a lot changed here. This deals with the town website. It's a community engagement. When it comes to the town crier as well as the calendar and other publications here in the town. There is one employee in this department. Building and plant, we talked about, um, this is a department budget that is done in conjunction with Department of Public Works. It contains a lot of the building maintenance um, as well as the insurance costs um that we broker annually. It also includes money to do some general maintenance here in this room in twenty twenty four, um, as well as other areas of the town. It does not include some of the larger projects, which like the HVAC in the windows, which will appear in the capital improvements program in Fund eighteen.
That includes the PA system.
There's money in there. Under general maintenance.
Thank you.
We did cut a little bit of money in this because of the HVAC reemplacement. We don't anticipate having those kind of, those maintenance costs year over year. That's why you'll see some differences. It's pretty flat, actually. That handles general government. Moving into a couple of the public safety departments, which are um overseen by RJ. Or thirteen, which is code enforcement. We, this includes three and a half employees. I'm sorry, two and a half employees. It's the building official, the code enforcement, um, individual as well as half of an assistant. Um, we will continue to see some third party costs in twenty twenty four to supplement the work. Um, work requests next year. Code enforcement expenses are offset by building permit fees, which are budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars and court fines for local ordinances at twenty five hundred. And those are based on historical figures. Planning and zoning. We've dealt a lot with RJ's department and the update of the planning and zoning ordinance. Um, so that work continues, um, through the application that she receives. And we all are familiar with what her and her staff do. This is a two employee department. You can see the change here. Um, there's additional money in here for um conferences and training as well as um just the general um inflationary costs. Personnel service costs for planning and zoning are supported by subdivision and land development fees and other costs that you see that come through our department. That's all I had for public safety this evening, even though I know there were a couple more on that agenda. I want to make sure that the department heads are here in case y'all have questions. Um, culture and rec is the fourth category of expenditures in the town. It's made up of the library, parks, community celebrations, and the Heritage and Cultural Center. The Heritage and Cultural Center has a budget of about thirty four thousand dollars projected for twenty twenty four. And that money is offset by what their anticipated fundraising goals are for their programs as well as events that they hold at fifty one thousand dollars. There is a um, reserve request. So as that money comes in, some of that money is to go towards building improvements up at the Heritage Center. Parks, this department is overseen by uh Jeff Shaneman, um, and Department of Public Works. It also includes our newly hired part time Parks and Rec Director. Um, her salary costs are included in here as well as two seasonal individuals to assist the um Department of Public Works in spring and summer care for the existing recreational facilities, including the ball field, soccer field, tennis courts, et cetera. Um, maintenance and repair services and on all, on all recreation facilities will continue during twenty twenty four. The larger projects can be found in the capital improvement projects fund budget. Can see how that falls out here. The library, this again is a budget that y'all have previously approved. There is a one percent increase from prior year. We have a agreement with the four other communities that support the library, um, which include Franklin Park, Marshall Ross, and Bradford Woods. Community events. As we discussed, um, the town now uses this budget to not only fund Community Day, but also National Night Out, Winter Fest. The new Parks and Rec Director is planning um some other smaller events. Um, recently she's done pickleball tournaments. I'm sorry, pickleball lessons as well as cookie decorating and she's proposing concerts in the park and other activities. Um, she has coordinated those increases in expenditures with increases in revenue. Um, the Community Day or Community Events budget is offset by Community Day donations and recreation activity fees. Four ninety one is refunds of prior year uh taxes, um, based on the historical values of some of these as those revenue items increase, so will their refunds. And so there is a larger than normal um increase in that budget item, but at a hundred and fifty eight thousand, it's still not a major um drawdown on the expenditures. As I mentioned, the two and a half million dollar transfer to capital projects with the capital improvement fund is a twelve percent increase over prior year. The American Rescue Plan, we've talked about. You can see how we've programmed some of that revenue and transfers. And we do hope to finalize that in twenty twenty four. The Transportation District is something that's been around here in the town for over twenty years. Um, these are the annual collections from those participants. And those are transferred into the capital improvement program to um fund some of those projects. The Assessment Fund is a fund that the town has used in the past for a variety of things and then assessed residents. Um, most recently, we've used it for a couple of the demos that we did here in the town and then pro, put tax liens on those properties. Um, this is not a town, this is not a fund that I anticipate activity in at this time in twenty twenty four. And then State Highway Aid Fund is the liquid fuels money again that we use for the road program. We have budgeted just to give you a preview into the capital improvement program fund. We have budgeted a million two hundred and fifty thousand dollar road program for twenty twenty four. This eight hundred and ninety one thousand dollars that you see as the transfer out will assist in funding over seventy five percent of that. Just to recap, we're at twenty eight million dollars. The general fund's at nineteen million. And to um, just give you the timeline one more time. The next meeting on November thirteenth will go over programs four ten through four twelve, which is the police, fire, and ambulance. They will talk through the crossing guards as well as the Department of Public Works, all the way from recycling through stormwater. And then we will go over the capital improvements program budget. November twenty seventh, the town will have a public hearing on the budget. We will take comments. And then December eleventh, we will have the review of the public hearing as well as the salary reviews during executive session and then approval of the twenty twenty four budget. Does anyone have any questions? I ran through that pretty fast, but y'all.
I guess I'd like to make comment for those that have joined us. Trish does a great job. She'll do breakout sessions with everybody up here to go through this in a ton of detail.
Yes.
So that's why you maybe didn't see a lot of questions from those of us up there. Because we've been through a lot of this, so.
Yes. And this year, in addition to the breakouts that we've done with individual council members, we also did a breakout with some of the council candidates. And we are available for any questions. It doesn't have to wait till a budget workshop or a public comment or public hearing. Um, you can call town hall and ask for me at any point. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Great House.
Thank you.
Liaison reports. Dr. Rafa?
Uh, MIPA had no view.
Thank you. President Taral, North Hills Council and Governments, staying here, no meeting. Are there any public comments on administration and finance committee items at this time? Anybody online? Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Isenright.
Recreation Committee. Adv- Activities Advisory Committee, liaison reports. I'm sorry, I'm going down to where I was on there. Planning and zoning, staff report RJ, sorry.
You don't have to talk, you know? I could just go home. Um. So, uh, we already hit on the temporary uses ordinance earlier. That's part of my report. Um, pre fill it is. Also, the other item that I would have discussed tonight would have been the rezoning request uh, for eighty eight oh seven Peoples Road, but as was noted on the agenda announcements, that application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Um, so they are no longer requesting that corner parcel that we talked about, I think last month uh, to be rezoned to MN. So we don't really have much tonight to vote on, just a bond reduction request that's pretty routine. Um, again, if anyone has any questions about the temporary uses ordinance, you know, which it sounded like we did the public hearing portion, but um, the meetings were both September and October are available on YouTube to rev- review in full detail. Um, and of course, my report is there as well. Um, and Trish, before I forget, I'll let you do the honors. What do we not have for the third time in a row?
I, I was going to give a big congratulation to the same thing. So there was no zoning hearing board meeting this month.
And there, there will not be one in November and TBD on December, but I have yet to find in the archives three months in a row for quite some time that we have not had a variance request.
And, and just to share with our audience, if typically we would have up to sometimes six or eight variance requests in a month. And, and thankfully, because of the new zoning ordinance that we have, it's eliminated a lot of the really almost nuisance type variance requests that our residents had to come and pay for and sit here before they could get their projects improved. And this includes building a deck that matched the, you know, the curve of their house. Uh, just a lot of little things that, and thankfully, this zoning ordinance makes a lot more sense and allows our residents to make improvements to their homes without the many, 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 many variances that we had to go through before.
Yeah, I'm, I'm up to eleven on my whiteboard for the running tally so far. So um, before I wrap up, well, I guess the part of my report that is me is done, but I wanted to introduce, since we have here tonight, our new building inspector, uh, David Fitz Henry. He's been with the town since right around Labor Day. And uh, I will turn the mic over to him if he wants to say anything, give a brief introduction, anything like that.
Thank you. Hello, uh, my name is uh, David Fitz Henry. For about the last month or so, I've been serving as your building inspector and BCO or building code official. Um, I've been doing code for several years now. And I've been involved in pretty much almost every aspect of construction in the past fifteen years. Uh, one bachelor's degree from Indiana University of Pennsylvania. I'm glad to see some scouts here because I'm an Eagle Scout as well, but I'm, I'm here to, you know, serve the community and I'll be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Planning Commission, Mr. Singer.
Uh, as you can tell, um, for market, it was heavy on the zoning, uh, which was withdrawn, so nothing else to add.
Thank you. zoning board, we've already said no. Public comments on planning and zoning items from the audience, from council online? Nobody's online. Okay. Okay, Trish.
Thank you. Um, now for the report of the Recreation Committee, um, moving first to Activities Advisory Committee. There was no meeting. Um, and now the Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center.
There was a meeting on Wednesday, this past Wednesday. The information is in your packet.
Um, I, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Um, one thing I noted um, in the minutes was a quote that the, the HCC would was able to get eighteen point two percent when they'd asked for thirty percent. And I just want to remind everyone that the budget has not been approved. So that statement is kind of putting the horse before the cart at this time.
Oh, yeah, a little premature, right? Any other comments on the Heritage Center? Questions? Okay. Okay.
Any public comments for Recreation Committee? Doing none?
Uh, Town Manager Report. Uh, Town Manager Reports, uh, was sent to everyone. There's a copy there at your seat. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thing now, it's flown to the engineers' report. Uh, the engineers' report, uh, was also included in your packets, uh, provided by Gateway Engineers. Uh, Kelly's here from Gateway. If there was any questions regarding their monthly reports. Anybody? No? Okay, very good. Town Attorney's Report.
My report was also in the packet. And if you have any.
Town Attorney's Report. My report was also in the packet, and if you have any questions, uh, we can chat in the executive section. Thank you.
And we have no old business. Now moving on to new business. What the next five items are really just uh counting giving Brian the approval to submit for state grants. Is that in essence what?
Yes, the the local share account uh is a statewide program uh that they open up uh previously. Previously, it was only the counties that had. A uh casino in their county. And then they've made that a statewide. Grant program that we applied successfully a few prior year and a half ago, which is how we're gonna help fund our HVAC and window program here at Town Hall. Um. I wanted to look at a couple of things that we had. I thought we give it a shot on five items that are things we plan to. Spend money on in two thousand and twenty five anyway. And uh and one other thing that I think might be beneficial. Cover the cost from the state. So the next five items are. Our our next five items on the agenda, five resolutions to apply for the local shared grant.
Okay, all right. Since he's a very housekeeping, we just want to do one at a time. We'll start. Net down with Mary Ann.
Okay, motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution sixteen of twenty twenty three series requesting a local share account. Statewide grant of three hundred and fourteen thousand fifty five dollars. From the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the purchase of a leaf vacuum recycling truck.
Second, second, Mr. Singh. Uh. Everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Mr. Casey.
Okay, motion to adopt tentative identified resolution seventeen of uh twenty three series. Requesting a local share account. Uh statewide grant of hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred and fifty five dollars. From the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the purchase of three police vehicles.
Second.
Second, Mary Ann. Uh. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Singer.
Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution eighteen of two thousand twenty three series requesting a local share account. Statewide grant of two hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollars from Commonwealth Financing Authority. Of the Commonwealth Pennsylvania to be used for the purchase of a ten ton dump truck with plow and salt scrubber.
Second, second, Mr. Casey. Uh. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Dr. Rapa, you want to try and do D?
Uh. Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution nineteen of twenty twenty three series requesting. A local local share count statewide grant in a hundred thirty thousand. From the Commonwealth Financing Authorities of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. To be used for the purpose of completing a traffic impact fee study.
We have a second. Second, second, Mr. Casey. Uh. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Last one of the bunch, Trish.
Okay, um. Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution twenty of the twenty twenty three series. Requesting a local share account statewide grant of that that three hundred thirty two thousand dollars. From the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the purpose of completing. Maintenance and or repairs to four town owned bridges and culverts.
Second, second. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And the next is just the bond reduction.
Uh. This is my word. I'll make the motion to approve a partial release of bond reduction request number four. Submitted by H and F Prop Development LLC for the passing of farms plan in the amount of forty five thousand. Two hundred and fifty dollars as recommended by the town engineers review letter dated October eighteen, two thousand and twenty three.
Second, second, Mr. Casey, everyone in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Uh. Next up, uh, our vice president of town council Carolyn Schwager resigned her position because she moved. Outside of her ward and cannot longer serve that ward.
Yes, we do.
So now we're gonna take nominations to fill that vacancy. Uh. So what we'll do first, I'll open the floor for nominations, and then once we close those. If it's one person, we'll vote by voice vote. If it's multiple, we'll do a roll call vote. So. I will open up the floor for nominations for the vice president town council.
I'd like to make a motion to. Oh, sorry.
The nomination.
Nomination to appoint Trish Cluden as vice president of town. Second.
No second needed.
No, no second needed, just uh. And then the floor is still open for uh any other nominations. Hearing none, I will close the nomination process, and now we will vote. So it would be. This is just a, how would I word that?
I would just say ask for motion to appoint uh Mrs. Cluden.
Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Trish Cluden as vice president of town council.
Second, very good. Everyone in favor? Congratulations, Trish.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, okay, cleaning up some things here. Last but not least, public non agenda comments. Uh, those, I know we have a the Boy Scouts in, yes, you come on up, so. Yeah, this is the name, address, and you have five minutes for the floor. You're gonna tell us what the volunteer work you've done for us and then everyone else here. As an opportunity to.
Right, uh, good evening. I'm Tim Midlock. I'm uh. Four one seven, I point five at five oh nine oh. So I'm the one who came up with the Eagle Scout project of renovating Potter's Park campus. I'm a member of Boy Scout Troop one seven one and have been scouting. Oh, sorry. I'm a member of Boy Scout Troop one seven one and have been scouting since first grade. For as long as I can remember, I visited the pond. Actually, I've been cleaning up the area. When determining my Eagle Scout project, it was a natural decision to use part pond as my product as for my project truly make a difference for the park. So the per past few months, I've been working with the township to plan it out as came to this, it came to ahead this past Saturday on the twenty first. Over the course of the project, we replaced the top insides of two existing benches. So they're no longer slimy and near risk of breaking. Uh. We set up a system of trailblazers to guide unfamiliar visitors from the park, clean memorial bench. Uh. We went through and cleared out all the brush and fallen trees, brought blocking the trail. We repainted the gateway with graffiti. And we've created two boardwalks over muddy areas of the trail. We've installed monofilament fishing line collectors to clean up the area. And we filled in potholes on the road to the trail. Over the course of the day, a total of one hundred and eighteen point five person hours were logged to spread for the hands of thirty three workers. Not including any of the many hours of planning, preparation, organizing beforehand. The project may be mine in name, but in truth is far from mine alone. Project belongs. The project belongs to my fellow troop members, leaders, and parents. These good hearted people who are willing to spend their Saturdays working out in the rain. It's no reward except that satisfaction comes from changing the world for the better. Additionally, I'd like to thank the township for the support, both financially with them supplying materials and administratively. With the people from the public works department, helping me helping guide me towards doing the most good.
Thank you. Amazing, you got thirty three volunteers on this Saturday. Great. Thank you. Thank you for what you do for our town and your and your rest of your troops. Um. Is there any other uh public non agenda item comments? Yeah, seating none, seeing none, meeting adjourned one. Oh, we have one.
Same issue. It's Ellen Wright, nine six three five, Ford from the road, House and Farm B A, one five one oh one. And I definitely know anything else, but I did look at the media for the town council. And there as of um. Today at five forty five, then they're on the agenda minutes media page. There's no media posted for September twenty six and October eight. So that's it.
Thank you. We'll look into that. Okay. And are there any other public non agenda item comments from anyone in the? No, seeing none, meeting adjourned.